Stand for the pledge to the flag. So I would like to welcome Kevin on the Board of Education and Justin back for another three-year term. And at this time, I'll have Fady give you your oaths of office.
If you could both please stand and raise your hand and feet up for me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office of school board member.
The duties of office of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for keeping those in short little places. I was worried you heard the whole thing.
Fady, if I could have the roll call of the board members?
I'll just go right down the line.
Sure.
Mr. Bueller?
Present.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Younger-Davis?
Present.
Mrs. Benjamin?
Here.
Mr. Stavel?
Here.
Mr. Fiskus?
Here.
Mrs. Clausen? Mrs. Emerson?
Here.
Okay, first agenda item to open up the meeting is I will take nominations to elect a board president. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Justin Stavel as board president.
There's one for Justin. Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any other nominations for board president? So we have a motion by Maria, a second by Mallory. All in favor for Justin as board president?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Justin, congratulations.
Thanks, John.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
As president of the board, you will have to take another oath of office. So Fady, if you could give him his oath of office, and then I'll turn the meeting over to Justin.
Okay. We'll do the same as we just did. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office of school board president.
The duties of office of school board president.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, at this point, I would like to take the nominations for our vice president.
I'll nominate Mallory Benjamin.
Thank you. Natalie, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jackie, do we have any other nominations for vice president? Okay, all in favor for Mallory as vice president, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations, Mallory. Yep, I think you got to do the same thing, sister.
Oh, I gotta do the same thing? Okay.
Okay. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of office of school board vice president.
And then again, the duties of office of school board vice president.
And according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
You're not full.
Yeah, those at the very end. All right, appointment of other officers, item four, be it resolved that items four point two through four point five be approved via consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Pete. Mallory, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Onto appointments by the Board of Education. Five point one, be it resolved that the items five point two through five point twenty-three be approved via consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second? Thank you. Pete, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Designations, item six. Be it resolved that items six point two through six point three be approved via consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Fady, we're going faster. You catching all this?
I'll figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm not thinking.
We've got that. It's all good.
Perfect. Thank you. Authorizations, item seven point one, be it resolved that items seven point two through seven point twelve be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Pete.
Second.
I'll go Maria.
I was louder.
Yeah, yes, you were.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Onto item eight. Be it resolved to authorize the issuance of a government entity crime policy to protect against theft, forgery, and fraud for appointed individuals. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So Maria, we're gonna go with you first, and then Mallory will second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, policies, regulations, and procedures. Be it resolved that items nine point two through nine point three be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mallory. Can I get a second? Thank you, Jackie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, cooperative being, be it, excuse me, be it resolved that items ten point two through ten point four be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Thanks, Pete. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Natalie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item eleven, district committees and special education hearings, be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven point five be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Twelve, establishment of the district mileage reimbursement rate and non-resident tuition rate, be it resolved that items twelve point two through twelve point three be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item thirteen, other items, be it resolved that items thirteen point two through thirteen point three be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Thank you, Pete. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Team four. Okay. So now, friends, this is where we're gonna take a look at different committees that we're going to be on. We have a few committees here that some of us have done over the years. I know that right now, there is a bit of a gap from when Matt was gone with our SOAR committee, and then also with the Haxton Library Scholarship, which is on here somewhere, I thought.
That's afterward?
Yep, yeah, that's afterward, so it's the next one. So, I don't, I don't know what, if anybody has any preferences, or if they wanna change, I wouldn't say lanes, but maybe change committees for one reason or the other. I gotta find it in time here. Fady, do you have a, are there any contacts?
I do.
Thank you. Oh, you've got an extra one there?
Yeah.
Thanks. All right, thank you. And then, the other thing I was thinking about too, Pete, is the GCEDC, and I don't know if that's, if that was a committee that, not necessarily a committee, but like a designation that we should like maybe assign, or task, or, you know, have that for following boards if we're not on it at some point.
Yeah, I think it gives us good insight.
Don't, don't you think it's a nice way, so maybe we think of that, 'cause I think...
The pilots moving forward. That would be a great idea.
I'd consider you to do that one.
Okay, Pete, yep, so you, so we're gonna add that, Fady, so, and when we, when we do the minutes here, it's gonna be the, what is, what's it, John C. Comby, Firemount?
GCEDC.
Yep, GCEDC.
Economic.
Economic. Okay, and in the past, Pete, both you and Matt have done it.
Yep.
I'll join if you want a second.
Yeah, that would be great, Pete.
Yeah, I work right next door to them, so.
But that's perfect, 'cause those meetings are, those aren't like, those are during the day, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and Pete, how, how often would you say those meet?
They were monthly. Kinda got to more quarterly.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll add that there.
I would do the safety still, 'cause we, I didn't really have many meetings with that.
Okay, so Jackie, you wanna do safety?
Jackie's fifteen.
Yep.
Then Jackie, if we stick with you here, you've done historically the SOAR.
The SOAR, yeah.
Would you be able to stay on that, and then Maria, would you consider doing the SOAR as well?
I'll stay with SOAR. That's fine.
Okay, so Jackie and Maria, and is that, we've had three in the past.
Yes, because sometimes I know one time I could go, and one time you couldn't, maybe.
Yeah, I can join.
And I just sent an email to Gretchen and Elba about setting something up sooner than later for that.
Yeah, okay, I think that's gonna be something that we're gonna have to...
Maria, is this your second year on, and Jackie, this is like your fourth? 'Cause you've done this since like when I was last on it.
Yeah, probably.
And it's been a long time since I've done it, so I'd like to kinda have like, yeah, and do our person on, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
If that makes sense with you guys, because Jackie, you know, you're, who knows how long you're, you know what I mean? So Maria, you've done two, two years, four years, and then Mallory, this'll be your year one here.
Yep.
So Mallory will join there, okay?
It's nice to have that perspective, and then you bring, you know, kind of, not just the historical, but Elba community perspective too. I think you see that more clearly than, than any of us do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Then, let's see here.
I was on...
What did you do last year, Mallory?
I was on the technology. I can stick with that again if you'd like.
You want, that makes sense. Okay, that's it then, no more than two. Okay.
Okay, you're cut off.
Yep, that's it. Then, Pete, or, not Pete, Pete, we've got you for that. Kevin, I'm gonna probably call you a couple of times, maybe even around, but definitely not Linda.
No, that'd be interesting.
I draw the line at Linda. Kevin, would you, would you consider doing the health and wellness?
I think that'd be most fitting.
Yeah, it would definitely work, right? Okay, I, I don't mind doing the code of conduct committee. I don't know if I've done that one yet, or yes, maybe I have, I don't know. And then facilities, right, we still have this here.
I'll keep that on.
You wanna do that, Matt? Okay. That's your two.
I don't have two. I'll do another one. You can put me on that.
What do you wanna do, facilities?
I've done facilities in the past. I don't mind doing it again.
Okay, okay.
Unless someone feels very strongly.
I mean, we could have three on the facilities if we wanted to, and then at least one of us would be present for sure.
I'll jump in.
You wanna do it? Yeah, I thought. Thank you, Pete.
I have a couple of those for the thin one tonight. Let me do a lot of these.
Yeah, um, so for, so for the policy, guys, what, what we've kind of talked about in the last couple of months is doing an overhaul on our policy, and not having any one person do it, but it be divided up into the nine different areas that our policy is kind of schismed or broken into.
Yeah.
So these would be done in kind of blocks. So instead of saying, you know, Pete, you've got, you're gonna be on the policy committee, and you're gonna have to meet once a month for, you know, nine months, that's crazy, I think. I think if we, when John meets and then hasn't broken down, like, we might be responsible for each of us, like, one policy block that will be in attendance at that meeting. And that way, it just kinda disseminates the responsibilities amongst us all, instead of one of us having to take a real monumental hit timelines. Which, I'm not saying any one of us isn't, would do, but I think it's just better to spread the wealth, opposed to having it responsible for one. So if we prove all of us for this committee, then when John kinda gets the scheduling or the timeline for what we're doing, then we can say, like, Pete, you might not be great for the summer months, right? 'Cause you're, for the spring at least, 'cause you're so darn busy, and, you know, same with you, Maria and Jackie, 'cause of all the softball and stuff, and, 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 you know, we can kinda play it around our schedule, whatever fits us. Right? So if that's okay, then we would all be on that committee.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense?
So what I can do is I'll reach out towards the end of the summer, going into the fall, you know, and then just kinda get a feel for, you know, who works best, and, and like I said, you know, talking with Justin, have it in different sections. There's really nine different sections. Obviously, some are shorter and easier than others, but we'll just spend, you know, a year, fourteen months, and work our way through it. That's normally the timeline, and it'll be, it'll be a heavy lift, but something that's definitely, definitely needed. Last time it happened was two thousand and six, so.
That's why we keep going back to that two thousand and six. You always think like, what a year, they must've had a policy, but come to find out, you get, what in the world? And then the last thing here, it's a representative to determine the scholarship for the Haxton Memorial Scholarship. So what that entails is usually, you'll get, you know, a handful of applicants, you'll read over the applicants, and what their, you know, what their resumes look like, and then you'll determine. I don't know if it's one or two scholarship, it changes sometimes, but it's facilitated by Mr. Peterson. He'll reach out to you. You'll get the resumes, and then, you know, it's a pretty quick turnaround. I'd say overall time, maybe two hours, three hours tops for that one time there. I don't know if there's anybody that's interested in that.
I wouldn't mind taking that.
Well, it'd be fitting. Your, your, your grandfather was the board president of the Haxton Library, so this would be a, a, a circle of life here, Kevin. So Kevin, you will...
Your grand.
Do that. Okay, and as always, these aren't necessarily locked, and if we can't make a meeting, we just make sure that we let people know that we're not gonna be there, and go from there. It's nice that we have a connection to what's going on outside of our school district. So I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion, okay, so let me do it this way. I'm, I'm gonna do this in a way that people are gonna be able to hear. Be it resolved that the following Board of Education members be appointed as committee members on the following for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. For the GCEDC committee, it will be Pete Zelif and Natalie Emerson. For the Instructional Technology Committee, it will be Mallory Benjamin. For the Health and Wellness Committee, it will be Kevin Bueller. For the Safety Committee, it will be Jackie Younger-Davis. For the Code of Conduct Committee, it'll be Justin Stavel. For the SOAR Committee, it will be Jackie Younger-Davis, Maria Thompson, and Mallory Benjamin. For the Facilities Committee, it will be Natalie Emerson, Maria Thompson, and Pete Zelif. For the Policy Committee, it will be Kevin Bueller, Maria Thompson, Jackie Younger-Davis, Mallory Benjamin, Justin Stavel, Natalie Emerson, and Pete Zelif. And finally, for the Haxton Scholarship Fund, Kevin Bueller will be the board member that represents us. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Get a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do you know what's hard about that, is why I slow down on your ladies' names, because I always, like, Mallory Skober, Salma Ditas, and that's really, I really have to focus to remember your...
Your current...
Yeah, I'm sorry that I, I take so long to do that.
That's all right.
It's fine. I still respond to Skober.
Yeah, no, but I don't need to, I, yep, there we go, all his name. So, be it resolved that the reorganization meeting be adjourned at six twenty-one P.M., and if you're watching Matt Lamb, it does not be any of your reorg.
Reorg means, or regular?
No, reorg. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I bet he's not.
That'll be spot.
Well, maybe, yes, I don't know.
Okay, so on to the next one here. Okay. We're just gonna read the whole thing. I'd like to call the meeting to order at six twenty-two P.M. We have already done the pledge of allegiance, and our roll call is the same as it was twenty-two minutes ago. Presentations tonight, I don't believe we have any. So we can move to item three, the minutes, be it resolved that the minutes of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting, the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Onto item five, approval of warrants. Be it resolved that after an audit of the bills, payment of the warrants, and the internal claims audit reports be approved. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Be it resolved, or, excuse me, five point two, Treasuries Report, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the Treasuries Report as listed. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have no policy yet for reading tonight. Laura, any, any updates for us?
I'm just looking forward to starting the new school year. The summer will be busy with closing out the old year, having entries, getting ready for the audit, and opening up the new year, purchasing, so summer's a busy time for the business office.
Well, thanks, Laura. John?
Just a couple items. You know, the end of the school year was a huge success, from the U.P. grad, U.P.K. graduation, to the fifth grade moving up ceremony, and, and our, you know, senior graduation. All the events were very well attended by our families and community, and, and like I said, you know, it's my favorite time of the year, 'cause it's always great to celebrate our students, and, and everything went smoothly. So thank you to everybody that was involved, from, you know, the teachers and, and the employees behind the scenes, you know, everything, everything was great. Our capital improvement project is progressing well and on schedule. They are finishing up the turf field this week, and will begin installing the new track next week. Progress in all the classroom is proceeding smoothly, and our only current setback are the lead times for some of the furnishings. While the classrooms can be handed over to our staff to start the school year, there are some delays with cabinetry and millwork that will need to be installed later. So as we get closer to the end of summer, we'll be talking with some of the teachers. If they wanna get into their classrooms, they can. But they're gonna have to realize that the cabinetry and millwork will have to be installed at a later time, so obviously, we'll, we'll be flexible and, and work with them on that.
It would seem like, John, that you guys went out and tried to get it quicker.
Correct.
And then it just ended up being that it's just gonna be a whole lot of time to create alternative ways to do it, and so it is a delay, and then it was, was end of October, early November?
I don't think it's that far. I wanna say it's gonna come in probably piecemeal, where, where, you know, as soon as it comes in, we'll tell these teachers, hey, we need to be in your classroom for seventy-two hours, get it installed, and then, you know, like I said, the teachers have been wonderful when we've had to shift them, you know, it's just, you know, like I said, we're constantly monitoring that. The same goes for our press box. We had a meeting last Wednesday, that's scheduled to be installed at the end of September. So it will not be available or used for the first handful of football soccer games here, including homecoming. They're gonna build us a makeshift press box. Obviously, the scoreboard's gonna work, the fields will be ready, but we just won't have, you know, the, the official press box up and running. They're gonna run two conduits of, of wires, obviously, for, you know, the electrical and, and, you know, the sound system and things like that. We're just gonna have to make do until, until it comes. Again, there's not much we can do. The reason for the delay is that SED considers the press box as it houses people, a separate entity, a separate project, so to say. That was on the fast track to be approved, but then, when, you know, everybody and their brother is building a stadium and press boxes, they're, they're hard to come by, so it's just a delay in materials. But it, it will be here, but not till the end of September, and like I said, we'll make do, we'll have a temporary one built, so it won't look as nice, but it'll be functional, so. And we are going to be interviewing a new SRO in the upcoming weeks. We have scheduled also three days of orientation for whoever we decide to choose, and training for this new deputy to come and work with Jordan Alejandro here on campus. That'll take place from July twenty-first to July twenty-third, with the official start date of our new SRO on nine one. Just waiting to hear from Chief Friday on an exact interview day and time.
And that's a ten month, we've changed.
That is a ten month, correct. That'll run from September one to June thirtieth, correct. And it's summer. I wish everyone in our community a happy Fourth of July holiday weekend coming up, and certainly, it's gonna be busy times over here. It's just a lot of different work than when teachers and students are here. Like I said, busy time for the business office. It's gonna be a very busy time for our business offices. We're hoping to reorganize things. We'll just keep plugging along daily, but everything's going well.
Thanks, John. So Rob disappeared. That's okay. I don't know why he did that.
I know, he was...
There he is. Hey, Rob, you have any updates for us?
Uh, it just says on the screen there, so the postcards were mailed on.
Yes.
And that is our landing page. Right now, there's just one group to join, but in the future, that could expand to athletics, to, uh, uh, sometimes we have, well, mostly music, athletics, a variety of different ones. Now, it's kind of a catch-all. What we're really doing though is giving everyone the chance to have that information for them. It's nothing different than what's on the website already. I had a concerned resident call me, and he was saying, you know, if I don't have a computer, if I can't sign up for it. I said, well, what, what, really, if you can, go to OIHornets.org. What you see on the homepage there is the same stuff that we're sending out through this. So it's not like you have to sign up to this in order to get the information. It's just more of a convenience feature that that comes to you, rather than having to remember, oh, maybe we'll take a look and see what's new on the website. So we got that in place. We started to post things. My construction update was one that I did, and so we're teaching everybody how to use that, and kind of be selective. Like, as long as that's information, it's good for the greater good, we put it out there. But if it's something very specific for the third grade class or whatever, then obviously, we don't include that.
So do we have any idea approximately how many people have signed up through the community?
Um, I'd have to look. It was just a handful of people so far, and even, some people I've talked to have said they didn't get the postcard yet. It really was like a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week that most people were talking about this, but I would, I would think it might be a week or two before they could get around to visiting the website and sending them for it.
I almost wonder if we could do something during Labor Days too.
We're talking about two, yeah.
Even if some of us are down there, just like at a stand or something, saying, hey, sign up, it's a great time to do it, we'll show you how.
Yeah, but you can do it right after.
I've been in there.
Sounds like Justin just signed up.
There you go, maybe that's the commission number three or whatever.
Dunking, instead of paying, they have to sign up.
Is that right?
Yes, scan the QR code, and then you can dump.
You can tell me. Yeah, I've been in there before. I hope that you've been in there too.
I could, I have.
We've all been in there.
I've been in there.
No? Maybe, I have to, maybe Kevin's got it too. That's, that's how he gets, there you go. So no, I appreciate it, Rob. I think it's super cool. A couple of people have sent me texts saying, hey, you guys put this into action very quickly, so that's not me, that's you, and I appreciate that. I think that's great. Just another way to kinda keep us connected to people that necessarily don't have kids in our district any longer, or, or never have, and to allow them to know what's going on here. So thank you. I think that's really neat, and I don't know of a lot of school districts that are, that are using school tool in this, in this manner at all right now in our area.
Some, some have used it more for like, something that they need like sporting events or for musical, but this is kind of a catch-all for, these are the things happening at the school that make us unique.
I love it.
Our idea behind it.
I love it. So thank you so much for that.
When does, when does things usually get filtered into the calendar, like, to log, you know, like, and see what's happening in the fall?
Yeah, calendar stuff comes from, there's three Google Calendars, one for district, one for Bill Hywood, one for my career, probably. The building secretaries are the ones that put those items in on the Google Calendar. That means it gets pushed to parent square for internal folks, and then it also now gets pushed to the public website. So that's where that data is coming from, is Google Calendar layers.
So I found that to be the most frustrating part from an outside entity, of like finding out what things are happening. I found chronically, our website to be very sparse.
Yeah, because that is a, I mean, it's, it's a subset of all the events happening. Like if there's something happening in a fifth grade classroom, that's gonna be internally where we all see it. But if the public needs to see it, it goes on the website version of that layer.
These are two sets of things?
Yes, they're all, they're all Google Calendars. But we've got three of them that are intended for public consumption. And then a whole bunch of other ones intend for inside home.
But now you have it all integrated through Parents Square, right?
That's right.
Was I saying School Tool earlier?
Yeah, you did.
I'm sorry, Parents Square.
School Tool feeds Parents Square.
Yeah, I apologize.
But also on our website, if you go to our sports component and click on the calendar, you can choose what sports you would like to upload to your calendar and click on the appropriate server. So if it's a Google Calendar or an iPhone Calendar, it'll automatically upload. And if the game is changed, it automatically changes it on our end. So that's available to.
The users side to do that, yes. And it comes from section five.
Yes.
Unfortunately, no way for us to pull that data in our district calendar, so we need to.
Still no way to, still no way to merge the.
No, section five.
Oh, sorry, I was showing something in the, I know.
Yeah. If they, if they made the choice to use a Google Calendar and make it public, then we can pull it out.
Oh, are you saying section five?
Yeah.
Oh, I was talking about merging, like, so I'll have one in the elementary, one in the middle, one in the high school. And in order for me to, like if something comes through the elementary school, but I'm on Emma's tab, I have to click over to see it. They're not merged, yeah. They still haven't came out with that feature yet where you can like see them all at once.
They are coming out with a merging of accounts. If you had, if you taught in one district and had kids in another, that parent's coming.
That would be convenient for people like you. And me.
They're working on that piece, I know, that those talked about in the roadmap. But as far as the other one.
It's more, it is, I mean, it's, seriously, it's first world problem. I'm okay, I'll make it. Yeah.
You're looking for something like, oh crap, I'm on the wrong kid.
On the wrong kid, yep.
And the calendar sync, is there any way that we can make that a little easier? Are you able to pick certain teachers for calendar syncs? I can't remember.
Teachers don't have their own calendars.
Their calendar, okay.
But it's, it's put in the classroom that they're in.
Okay.
If teachers want to put a classroom teacher on the calendar, they can, but I don't really think a lot of them do because they would feed it to the main office.
Yeah.
If it's something we all need to know about, it would end up on the Google Calendar.
Yeah, because on that calendar part, on the Parents Square, you can sync that to your phone too, and it automatically generates.
Yeah. And this is part of more onboarding that we can do, is recommending to our teachers, like, don't forget, if there's something that's just, you know, the cupcake celebration, year class only, you can put that on there for parents to see. And you don't have to say, oh, the whole district doesn't even know, so they won't put it out there. So there's ways to filter it down.
Cool.
Thanks, thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
All right, new business. Be it resolved that items eight point two through eight point five be approved by consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Pete's there, do you second that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yay for free lunches and breakfast.
Yeah, there, there we go. And I think we had a couple of donations here for instruments, and I appreciate those.
Yes.
So thank you for that as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Eight point six, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget adoption. Okay, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Oldfield, Alabama Central School District hereby adopts as presented contingency budget for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, which the Board affirms is comprised of ordinary contingent expenses in compliance with the New York State Education Law. And the Board further directs that the district shall make available a statement specifying the projected percentage increase or decrease in total spending for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year, which explains the reasons for disregarding any portion of an increase in spending in formulating the contingency budget. Can I get a motion? I think Pete's actually got it, Mallory, do you second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Eight point seven, it's an O A T A memorandum of agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following memorandum for agreement between the O A T A and the district for the twenty-twenty-five school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eight point eight, the O A A A memorandum of agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved the memorandum of agreement between the O A A A and the district for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. For communications, Stacy emailed me, Stacy Glada emailed me and said that there was a letter for me.
Oh, yes.
And if I, I, I don't usually ask to like have an hand delivered to me. But I just don't want to forget that, so this might be a good time if you know where that is. Other than that, I don't believe that we have any other communications for tonight. On to personnel.
Discussion.
No, no discussion around here for tonight. Be it resolved that items eleven point two through eleven point five be approved by a consent agenda.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
As far as discussion goes, I do, I just want to let all the people that have decided to be department chairs, that we appreciate the extra work. That next level of oversight and efficiency that we count on to make sure that our kids are learning what they're supposed to be learning and our teachers are feeling supported. So it's a lot of, a lot of effort, a lot of time, and we greatly appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Eleven point four, mentoring appointments for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Be it resolved, following teachers be appointed to mentors for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as listed. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
As far as discussion, much like what I just said, mentors are huge. With great mentors, you have great teachers. And it's, the names on this list are not a surprise to me that they are mentors. And I hope these mentees realize how lucky they are to have years of experience supporting them for their journey into Oldfield, Alabama. So thank you to our mentors out there. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Summer held. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approved Dominic Del Priore is a summer school cleaner for July through August of twenty-twenty-five year. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thanks, Dom.
Yeah, welcome.
Yeah, right? I love it, he's got a lot of energy, that guy does.
Another full circle.
Awesome. Thanks, Dom, for coming and helping out. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, eleven point six, managerial contracts. Be it resolved, the following managerial contracts for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year be approved as written. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to closing remarks. Pete, why start us off tonight, please?
Happy summer.
You have it.
Yeah, no, looking forward to, this is really where our year begins, right? So we're looking forward to it. We've got a lot of work to do this year. Ready to dive in? Get her done.
Thanks, Pete. Natalie?
Sure. So I'm, starting out the school year feels like our January. I'm looking forward to some growth opportunities and looking at our long-term strategic plan. I think with the new board members and change of hands, this is always an exciting period where we know what the community wants this year and moving forward with community and transparency and the communication between all that. I think we're in a really good situation moving forward, and I look forward to building further relationships with you all.
We're gonna, we're gonna give Kevin a second here. Hold on, Kevin, we're coming to you, we're working.
Right now, you want it right now?
Yeah, give it to us.
It is a pleasure, but at the same time, a little overwhelming, but I was able to follow along. Just, the toes are wet. But yes, very excited, hoping that the onboarding and getting used to it comes very quickly so I can participate more, be heard. I'm anxiously waiting for some in-person, that'd be kind of fun, see what the voices of Oldfield want to say. So welcome anyone that's listening or watching to come visit. And just happy to be here. Thanks for having me.
Thanks, Kevin. All right.
Happy summer, everybody. Congrats on all of the graduations and the moving up ceremonies and all that cool stuff. The campus was really humming last month, and I can say last month because it's July first now, right? So I was not at the last meeting, I apologize, but I was busy winning a Little League championship. Yeah. So I wasn't able to thank Matt Lamb for, you know, all that he's given, and I learned a lot from him. So I want to say thank you to Matt and that he will be missed. And also welcome to Kevin for stepping in and sitting next to me. It's gonna be great. If you can remember your charger every meeting for me.
Having my back.
Really appreciate that. That would be wonderful. And like Pete said, we've, we've got some work to do. So I'm excited for the summer, but I'm excited for growth and opportunities and to get to work as well, so.
Thanks, Maria. Jackie?
I was kind of hoping this would be like a little off-season training, right? You know, after school season, but there's really no off-season, so jump right in, I feel a little recharged about it, so I think it's a good time. And welcome, Kevin. Hope we, look forward to working with you. That's good.
Mary?
Just same, happy summer to everybody, end of school, all the ceremonies and events were amazing. So thank you to everybody who put the time and energy into those things. They really are very special here, I think, and parents really appreciate the opportunities to be engaged with their kids' education and all the things that are happening. So thank you for all you all do to make that possible. What else? No, just thank you for, you know, the nomination here. I'm excited to be sitting in the vice presidency and like I think Natalie started us off with here. We, you know, have a unique opportunity, we know a little bit about what we're looking to accomplish this year before we jump right into it. And we're looking forward to, you know, new, new year, new, new stuffs we can be taking, so. Is that for me?
Thanks, Mary. For me, I really enjoyed the graduation ceremony. I thought Brittany did a really wonderful job organizing that, and so I appreciate it all the time and effort there. I, it's amazing how quick that just comes. I feel like we were just in that graduation mode, just, just not too long ago. Here we are, we've done it, and then we did it again. I'm proud of our graduation rate. I'm proud of the wrapping up of all of our exams this year. It's interesting to have, you know, my son back in those exams, and they're stressful, right? His first regency ever took, and he's so worried about it. But both his teachers, Mrs. Sarrazin and Mrs. Loom, were really great and supported him all the way through it. And they were in communication with us all the way from the beginning to the end, so I'm very grateful for that. I think too, at the end of the school year and the beginning of a, of a new one for us, is an opportunity to kind of wrap things up and look back and see some of our, I'm very excited to see what our reading exams turnout is and then our state assessments from grades three through eight, both math and L A. I'd like to see if we may grow from last year to this year, and look forward to those reports in September or October when they come out. I'd say the last month was hard, to say the least. It was discouraging for me in many, for many different reasons. And I think it's, it's very well known why it was discouraging. With this contingency budget, it is, it's gonna present its own challenges. And unfortunately, when, you know, we would like to have our school district as open as, as we would like to have it, there's gonna be some things that aren't going to be open. Our weight room is not going to be able to be used or full this summer, and that's discouraging to me, along with many other things. So be patient with us. We'll get it, and we do have a lot of work to do, but we're here. And we'll continue to try to communicate in every avenue that we possibly can. And if you could think of another way for us to communicate, we'll be here. And we'll have whatever conversation we need to have. So with that being said, enjoy your summer because it goes by super fast. Can I get a motion to end the meeting at six forty-eight? Thanks, Pete. Second, Mallory? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, guys? So my girl said thirty tonight, don't freak her out.